Good evening and welcome to the September 24th, 2012 School Board Meeting. We do have a quorum this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We had a regular meeting on August 20th, a special meeting on the 21st of August, and a special meeting on September 10th. Okay, I had a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from those three meetings. Any additions or corrections to the minutes as written? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. The minutes have been approved. Dr. Dressen, could you please walk us through tonight's agenda?
Certainly can. We'll start out with some recognitions, some good news items in the district. We have, it's that time of year where we're approving all of the various improvement goals at the site levels, as well as our Edina Alt Comp goals related to teacher performance and compensation, so that'll be on our reports. We have some consent agenda items, again, are quite routine. Within our action items, we have, again, approving those reports. We do have the proposed levy for 2012, payable 2013. This is the proposed levy. The board will take action on that in December. And then finally, we have a variety of policies, which is, again, part of our routine items as we review all policies, and then that would conclude our board agenda.
Thank you, Rick. Hearings from members of the audience, members of the public are invited to come to the meeting and discuss a point for up to three minutes. We do have one individual that contacted us prior to this meeting. Julie, any second or additionals? Nope, at this point. Alan, could you please take your three minutes and share your information?
Chairman Meyer, Dr. Dressen, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak to you again this evening. My name is Alan Kohler, and I'm here representing 400 families of the Parkland Knowles area that are seeking to detach from the Hopkins School District and attach the Edina School District. I appeared before you last May on the 21st, and I want to provide you a brief update. We met last Thursday in front of the Hopkins School Board, and you each have a binder here, and this is materials we presented to them, so we want to make sure you have the same materials. I quickly like to run through it and just give you some highlights, and then I'll conclude my time here. If you go to tab one, you'll see a map of our defined detachment area. And I'd like to briefly pause on this, because I know I get questions, and I'm sure you get questions, as to why is this the area in question and not more of Edina, which is in Hopkins, et cetera. There is no mechanism, I know of, for this to go to any type of popular vote or referendum, so what we are stuck with is a statute that says you must start at the district boundaries and go property by property inward through a petition process. So what you see here is what we've worked on over the past few years, literally thousands of hours, 60-plus volunteers, to just get this far, to the extent of our neighborhood. I will share briefly what we have done there, but the real question to ask when anyone else comes forward and says, "Why isn't our neighborhood included?" The question asked is, "Have you done the work?" This requires a great deal of work, literally house by house, street by street, and we have not found any shortcuts, and we have not found any other way of going about it other than a petition process. In regards to petition process, tab two is our results as of September 17th. That shaded area represents 463 properties. We have received signed petitions, 437. We will receive more, but as you can see, we're already up to 95% of the properties have signed in support of that, per the requirements of the statute. Tab three is an example of the petition we expect to be filing with the Hennepin County Board of Commissioners about the mid-part of October. And so if you were interested in seeing what that looks like, this gives you an example of that. Tab four, I also like to keep you apprised of our student enrollment data. And again, for this academic school year, we're looking at 212 children in that shaded area I showed you earlier. Of those, 133 are enrolled in the Edina School District, and we still have less than 10 enrolled in the Hopkins School District, so we're still close to 4% of the total children enrolled in Hopkins. And then the remaining are in private parochial and other school districts. And then tab five is a spreadsheet, which we provided to the district administration previously, which is a full accounting of all the properties in that area, the referendum market value, and what the potential tax impact could be. We do understand that there may be a third party need to be brought in to help analyze that data, but we have created, we have pulled together all that data for that analytical process. The rest of the tabs are just more background information, which I don't need to go into any detail at this point. So just to wrap up, the reason I'm here again is to just provide you an update of the information regarding our petition campaign and our efforts going forward. We would also request that you approve any additional research and analytical data collection regarding financial impact or student enrollment data as you see fit. We'd also request that you continue the discussions with the Hopkins School District about coming up with a type of solution to this situation. And we would also request that you do provide us a statement of support for petitions who are detached prior to a meeting of the Hennepin County Board of Commissioners. Thank you very much for your time.
Next item on the agenda are recognitions.
I'm going to ask Jessica Hanks to come up. Jessica did the amazing feat of accomplishing the highest possible score with the ACT tests, and we are very excited to have her a part of that. Jessica was one of two students, actually, that was successful in that venture.
Andrea.
Andrea Kimball was the other, and Andrea cannot be here tonight because she has a night class, and so she's taking that as part of her continued learning. But I know, Jessica, you've got a heavy load as well, as you're committed to that academic. Why don't you talk a little bit about your year that you've got ahead, and maybe also take a look at where you're going next?
Ahead right now, I'm trying to juggle four AP classes: calculus, physics, literature, and Latin, so that's a full year ahead for me.
Okay, and if those are successful, which we know they'll be for you, what does next year bring? Where are you in the journey as far as taking a look at your options for the college and university world?
Right now, options are just really open. I have a few schools that I'm thinking of, more private liberal arts colleges that I'd like to check out, but it's still very much in the works.
Okay, last question, Jessica, before we recognize you formally. What is the advice you could give those sophomores and juniors who are preparing for that test? That, was there an insider move that you made, or what do you think really helped you in preparing to take that test?
It's, it's, you ask hard questions, but...
I know. I'm the superintendent.
It's more like, the studying is important, but like, it's more important to like, know how to learn and how to study than it is, because it's, because like, you can read over your notes all you want, and like, but sometimes that just doesn't work. It's more knowing how, more knowing how to learn and how to retain that knowledge. And I was lucky, because I had a teacher who was very good at teaching me how to learn, Michael Seaman in elementary school, but, I mean, it's kind of hard to learn late in the game, but it's not too late.
Fantastic. Well, we wish you well this year with a very busy schedule, but wish you well, well into your future. We congratulate you. Here's a certificate of commendation from the school board. Jessica, congratulations, and take some time off. Don't work too hard, but we wish you well throughout the year. Thank you very much, Jessica. We won't ask what Tom got in his ACT tests, but Tom is this amazing, amazing servant of our community that we want to recognize. For 31-plus years, Tom served us in many ways, especially with the fire department. His last stint was officially, Tom, I got to get that title now. Your official duties were the... Just hang on now. You were the official, what was your official title, Thomas?
Fire marshal.
But Thomas, fire marshal.
Fire marshal, thank you very much. I didn't want fire chief, fire marshal. But Tom, you were really involved in safety. I mean, that was your gift to us as far as making sure the schools are safe, the students are safe, you were teaching safety. You had many roles that you were playing, administrative, coordinator, teacher, guide. Talk about some of those memories you have, and some of those high spots you had in working for our city, and especially with the school district.
Well, 31 years and I lived the dream, something I've always wanted to do. Never thought I'd be a fire marshal, and then have to learn how to be a public speaker. And grateful for downstairs, we know our teacher, Lisa, in the family center. She was my first person I went to to educate the kids, and she held my hand and walked me through it, and got me started. I was very grateful to her. But the opportunities to come in here and teach have been really some of the best memories I've had. You know, I've been teaching a babysitting class for the last eight or nine years here in the summertime, really enjoy getting to the kids and trying to teach about fire safety. And then just being part of, you know, this district is fantastic. We have great staff here, building relationships that I've built with the principals and custodians, and being part of the referendum back in 2004, getting some things done here, and the biggest thing is getting the buildings all sprinkled.
So that had to be one of your biggest challenges, working with remodeling. It was all, you know, some new construction, but a lot of remodeling and retrofitting and making sure that we could do that and also be fiscally responsible. What were some of those big challenges that you faced when you were looking at that 2003 building referendum that was critical to our future, but also we wanted to make sure we were going to be able to raise the safety bar?
Well, the great thing was working with Jay Williamson at the time and Bob Peterson, and they both wanted to get the building sprinkled, and that was before the referendum. And then the referendum came along, and I got to be part of that group, and I was really grateful for that and honored to do that and help out, and we got this whole thing put together, knowing what I wanted to see happen here for the school district, and that was sprinklers and some other safety things upgraded. And then it got passed, so excited to see that get done, and then we ran into the challenges that we saw back in '04 with, you know, things coming over budget and kind of having to rethink, redo things, but we still got the building sprinkled with sprinklers, and that was the huge accomplishment there.
It was. And Tom, what's next for you? We know that retirement is just the next step, but what does it bring? Because we know you've got that call to service. And what are you thinking about as you take a pause for a period of time, I know, but you're thinking down the road?
I would, if I could do anything, I'd like to continue to teach. And if I could find some way, the district here, through the fire department, to continue on with what I was doing here down at the family center, I'd be really grateful to continue that work, because that is by far my favorite memory of what I've done here for the school district.
Well, I think we'll find a place for you, Tom. We again congratulate you for the years of service to our community, for our young people, and for our staff, for everything you did to help Edina Public Schools achieve where we are today. You are part of our excellent story. So on behalf of the district, we commend you with this certificate and wish you well in your future journeys.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you.
Next up, we have our reports. First item is the 1112 Superintendent's Evaluation Summary, which I'll provide. Back on September 10th, as we do each and every year, we did our annual review of the superintendent's performance, looking at both the goals and also a discussion of a little bit where we're going as we move forward. Several of the strengths we talked about, Superintendent Dressen is his leadership and equity work for the district, he and his team, ability to develop important strategic plans, the alignment of our financial resources with our targeted goals, and a commitment to team building through training and communications. Some areas of growth we discussed is expanding the use of educational data to improve student learning, and supportive school board decision-making process by providing more training and background information for the board. Some of these growth areas were incorporated into Dr. Dressen's goals for this upcoming year, but we're really pleased with his work and thank him for continuing to lead our district. At this point, Rick is at, in the first year of the three-year contract with the school district, so I thank the other board members for their feedback and input, and I thank Rick for his efforts for the district, so thank you.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to work with this team and the entire community.
Next item, we have a report from Teaching and Learning, the System Accountability Report. Randy Smazzo, welcome. And Chad, I guess, is going to join in?
Randy's been busy jumping in and getting us geared up for the year, and we thank Randy for a great entrance into the work of Teaching and Learning, and look forward to working with Randy throughout as we move forward with the goals that are going to be shared
Good evening, Chairman Meyer, Superintendent Dressen, and school board members. As I listened to Jessica, excuse me, a few minutes ago, talk about that very significant lesson that she had, learn how to learn. Thinking about that, that's really what this is about. The state of Minnesota has some requirements for all school districts to report upon our accountability for teaching and learning, our report on how we ensure that we're teaching students to learn how to learn. So what we're going to give you a brief overview of tonight in the PowerPoint is some highlights from the report, the annual report that we report to the state on curriculum instruction and student achievement for 2011 and '12. We're also going to briefly mention some things from the staff development report for 2011-12, and our alternative compensation goals for 2011-12 and for 12-13, and our school improvement plans, which have been submitted and are in your stack of papers this evening for 2012 and 2013. State statute requires that by October 1st of each year, the school board shall adopt the annual report, which is either published in the newspaper, distributed by mail, or posted on our website. Our intention is to post this report on our website, and there are several school board policies that also relate to the requirements for this report. Some of the elements required in the report include the membership of the committees, the application process, how long they serve, the student achievement goals for meeting Minnesota standards, improvement plans with staff development goals, the progress from our previous plan from previous years, and then the assessment results from those previous Also, we have a staff development requirement statute that stipulates that since we're using state staff development revenue, that we need to report on the status of our staff development activities from the previous year. We're very proud to announce tonight that we have all staff development reports completed on time, and they are in the system and sent to Minnesota, and we'll be asking for a resolution to adopt that report from you this evening. We also have Minnesota statute that governs the Alt Comp requirements, the Alternative Teacher Performance Pay system, to annually keep you updated as to the progress that we're making through that system. The first part of the requirement is that by October 1st, we'll report upon the goals that we have for Alt Comp, and you get a more thorough, complete report in June of each year. And that probably is the main Alt Comp presentation. And I believe Libby delivered that this last June. In terms of school improvement plans, they really lay the continuous improvement framework that moves our strategic plan into action in those schools. A SIP plan includes school or site goals, it includes the Alt Comp goals, it also includes the relevant data that has led to those goals, and the specific action plans that buildings will be taking in terms of staff development, in terms of activities, or specific things that they're doing to try to achieve those goals. You have included in your packet those school improvement plans from all 11 of our sites for this year. That continuous improvement effort takes us to a focus on our resources, our activities, and our energies, so that we can ensure that we are providing a personalized learning environment to impact student achievement. And right now, we're in the process of examining the professional development needs at each site that will support them in trying to reach their goals as they have described in their school improvement plan. The Alt Comp, the SIP, and the staff development goals then all really come together in an overlapping fashion, and they are aligned to the needs that the system has. We have many vision scorecard metrics that are used to report back to the board regarding some governance information, and those metrics just really measure our progress towards the strategic direction that the board has set. This slide summarizes some district goals for 2011-12. Our goal in mathematics was to increase our performance from 79% on our state MCA to 85% by the spring of 2012. Had we reached that goal, which we did not, we would have impacted another 271 students. We'll describe how close we got to that goal in a few minutes. We also had a reading goal to move from 91%, 91.2% in the spring of 2010 to 93.1% in the spring of 2012. So again, about a 2% increase in those scores. As you can see, those are relatively high performances, but we do have goals that continue to push us in a continuous improvement fashion to get even better on a yearly basis. In terms of our strategic plan, some staff development highlights from last year included collaboration and teaming for effectiveness to increase that. We began work in professional learning communities in many of our sites. Not all of them started that work this year, but they are deeper into that work this 2012-13 school year. We did staff development around cultural proficiency and equity. Our Alt Comp coaches did a various amount of instructional coaching throughout the year. We did coaching on the use of data and how to use data to improve your instruction, and how to integrate technology. And our new teachers get a variety of experiences through our LINKS program, which is a monthly meeting where they go through a variety of topics to be prepared to teach in the Edina system, and they are also mentored by our teachers on special assignment. We also have many other additional opportunities, but those are some of the highlights from last year. At this point, I'll turn over to Dr. Chad Schmidt to speak to some of our data from 2011 and '12.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, members of the board. So I have a couple of slides that we looked at in August, and then some new information around MCA science that was released between our presentation in August and today, and then also MMR got released for 2012, so I have that here as well. The way we've tried to flow this presentation is so that you understand that we've set goals, we've put staff development practices in place, and so now this is a look at an assessment of how do we do relative to those goals and that staff development work. So this is MCA reading. The yellow bar is 2010-2011, the green bar is 2011-12, and the black bar is Minnesota averages. So what we can see across all grade levels is that Edina students perform well above the state average, and in most grade levels, made some gains over the previous year's proficiencies. This is mathematics. This is a slide that you saw again in August. Same set of information in terms of yellow being 10-11, green being 11-12, and black being the state average. Well above the state average at all grade levels. In many grade levels, you see gains from last year to this year. Remember that in 10-11, it was a new MCA III math test, which was aligned to a new set of standards, and so really, this is our baseline and what we're trending on. Some of the work we've done in both areas is looking around student group performance and how there, we've got some gaps in student group performance, and so that's all embedded within this work. The new piece, yes?
Chad, I'm sorry. Just out of curiosity, what's going on statewide at grade 11?
Right. So what happens with these state tests is that every year, the proficiency cut score gets set. And so in having some conversations with some folks at MDE and some other assessment coordinators around the region, there's some sense that maybe the year before, the assessment got, cut score got set just a half notch higher than it had been previous, or sorry, a half notch lower, therefore more kids being in that proficient pile. And this most recent year, it got set a half notch higher, which then, less kids were proficient. So what we saw, this was, the state average dropped by about the same amount that the Edina senior high average dropped. Actually, sorry, the state average fell a little bit more than the Edina average, but it was a similar trend across the state in that regard.
Thank you.
And then Chad, do you want to also mention that this was last year, for whatever reason, MDE allowed multiple testing?
Thank you. I'm going to come back to that with one more, but that's all right. So we can bring it up here. So in 11-12, Minnesota started a relationship with a new testing vendor, the American Institutes of Research. We'd been with Pearson previously, and so in 11-12, we'd started with a new test vendor, and with their online test, they allowed, Minnesota created an option for school districts to take the MCA III online test, grades three through eight, I'm talking specifically here, multiple times. And in Edina, we elected to say, "You know what? It's a state accountability test. We're going to take it in a consistent pattern as we have in the past." And so we did one testing opportunity per student. But some other districts around the state took it multiple times, and what we saw statewide is a bump in proficiency averages. And what's unclear is, how much is that bump is from the frequent assessments in a short period of time, and how much of that is from teaching and learning and remediation work? And so that's some question that we're dealing with. Now, what's interesting is, the state got very clear that next year, this, the year that we're in now, there will only be one testing opportunity in the spring. So it's going right back to the way it should have been all along. Okay, thank you. So MCA science, this is the information we did not have last time. The green bar is Edina student percent proficient, and the black bar is the state average. You can see, similar to reading and math, that we are above the state average in all three groups that are tested. It's tested at the, at fifth grade, at eighth grade, and then in high school after a life science course, typically in grade 11 here in Edina. This is MCA III science, which is a new version of the test. So we really shouldn't be looking at trending information over time, because it's the start of a new baseline. I added a couple of slides that I didn't send in the packet the other day, so I just want to give you a sense of, if we look at it over time, what's happening. So there's our scores, there's a typo that should be 70.7 at the high school. So these are just the three scores on the previous slide. So if we look at it from '09-10 to 10-11 to 11-12, you see that the elementary students are, there's more students proficient this year than there were previously, even though it's a new test. So we're not drawing a straight line from last year to this year, but more kids proficient, which is, I would say, good news. At the middle school, commensurate with what happened at the state level, the Edina average is lower in eighth grade than it was in the year previous. Again, a new test with new standards, so we're looking at a different kind of measure here. And then at the high school, that should be 70.7 again, not 70.1, but similar to what happened at the statewide, the high school average is lower this year than it had been from the previous test. So new standards, higher level of rigor, higher expectations. So what we've been doing is we've been taking some time to disaggregate. We've been working in teams, like the middle school science teams are working hard to try to figure out, what does this tell us, and where do we need to make our improvements to closely align our curriculum and what we're teaching with the new standards? Yeah?
Chad, does the information on the new testing allow you to pull out a subset of material that would align with the previous two years' tests, so we can tell if we're at least on track with previously learned, and then we know the benchmark for what's added?
That's a great question, Regina, and the answer's no. Because it's a new set of standards and a new test, we really pretty much draw a firm line here, and that's why I've color-coded those and shaded them in, so that we can see that's the start of a new baseline for us. All right. Another piece of work from, another assessment from the Minnesota Department of Education is the Minnesota Grad Writing Test that's taken in grade nine. This is data that you saw last time. 99.2% of students proficient in grade nine of last year, which is tremendous. And you can see, if you look at it over time, we've been up in that 90, upper 90s in terms of percent proficient over the last four years. And then, the last one I want to talk about is the Multiple Measurement Rating System from 2012. So just to remind you, in 2011, Minnesota Department of Education applied for a waiver from the federal government around the NCLB stipulation that 100% of students be proficient by 2014. So if you remember, No Child Left Behind, that was the initial ruling. And so Minnesota created a new system called the Multiple Measurement Rating System that looks at proficiency, it looks at growth, it looks at achievement gap reduction, and finally, it factors in graduation rate for the high school level. Now, what's good about this is it takes in more factors, and it looks at more information in trying to determine our schools being successful with our students or not. The bad part of that is that it takes in more information, makes more confusing calculations, and a little bit harder to interpret. So as we're getting used to interpreting, I want to share, this is the slide that you have in your packet, and at our nine schools, you can see the MMR rating from 2012 shows us percent of points earned, which proficiency, growth, and achievement gap. 25 points in each one of those three areas, so Concord earned 94% of the 75 points possible for them. All right. So what we, a couple of things I want to highlight. One, you can see Cornelia's percent of points earned at 52.8%. You see Highlands at 73%, you see Southus at 66%. Those are all a drop from where their baseline was a year ago. And so what we are finding when we look at that is it's not a proficiency question, it's a growth and an achievement gap reduction question. And so that's the work we've done with school improvement teams and with principals at those buildings, is taking a close look at saying, what percent of students are making growth, as measured by the MCA, and how are we closing the gap? And how are we closing the gap for, the gap is defined by basically all students of color in Minnesota, by students who have an IEP, so Special Education Students, LEP students, and free, and students who qualify for free introduced price meals. So how are those students growing relative to their peers? The focus rating takes a look specifically at the, at, again, closing the achievement gap. So it pulls apart some of the MMR and says, let's look specifically at closing the achievement gap, and you can see our scores there. So the highlight is that Creek Valley was named as a reward school for the second year in a row. They are one of the top 15% of performing schools who receive Title I funds. And in Edina, we have just two schools that receive Title I funds, that's Cornelius and Creek Valley. So Creek Valley is recognized as a reward school again via this MMR assessment, or MMR system, sorry.
So if there's a low number here, say for Cornelius or Southview, how do we interpret that? What are next steps for that?
So the first question is to ask, did it come from proficiency? Did it come from growth, or did it come from achievement gap reduction? So what I can tell you in all three of those areas, the proficiency rates were high, so they earned almost all of the points possible from the proficiency side. But from the growth side and from the achievement gap side, achievement gap reduction side, we've got room to grow and where we can focus some of our attention. So it's then starting to disaggregate down to the student level, well, the grade level A and then the student level next, and saying, okay, are students trending, making the kind of growth we'd expect them to make or not? And if not, what are we going to do to intervene? And so we have response to instruction practices in place that that will be some of the work, personalized learning is some of that work. It's getting very intentional.
Can I ask you one more question?
Yep.
In terms of analyzing data, and I heard that you said this is just another way that they've mixed the numbers together.
Yeah.
How do you feel about this data? I mean, does this, does this help us to drive us where we need to go? Or are we, is this convoluting the picture too much?
Yeah. So that, that's a fine line that we have to walk, is making sure we under, clearly understand what's in here. Because it's got more factors in it, it makes it potentially convoluting a little bit. But what we know is that in Edina, we've seen a gap in performance from many different groups of students, and coming out of the strategic plan efforts, we've, we are in the process of putting a plan in place to close that achievement gap. And so what this does is it sort of reinforces that message that we have a gap and that we need to continue to work at closing that gap.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Can you remind me on these ratings, both the MMR and the focus rating, are these ratings such that any school that was being evaluated could get 100%? Or is there some percentage ranking that not, that they put the schools along like a bell-shaped curve, so some are going to be higher than, or lower? I seem to remember something like that, but I--
So in, in coming up with this final number of, so A of the points earned, so out of 75 in most cases, and then factoring that to a percent, they first rank the schools from highest performing school to lowest performing school, and you get, you get a percentile ranking that's factored into your possible points earned. So there's not, not all schools are going to get the 25 points earned because we're ranking them from top to bottom, and you get a percentage of that. Okay. Yes, Lenny?
On the achievement gap, does the data take into consideration how long the students been in Edina?
It does not. What it does take into account is previous performance and then current year performance. So it's looking at students from third grade into fourth grade, from fourth grade into fifth grade, and then it takes all of those scores. So we're looking at, A, are we, is each student sort of making an effort to close, you know, is each student growing at a rate that's narrowing or closing the achievement gap or not? And then all of those get averaged together into a final score.
Looking at the one-year growth is measuring--
Yes. It's measuring just--
So, but it is assumed then that the student is one, has been one year in a district in order to--
Yes, because you've got to have two years' worth of, that's right. You've got to have a score from 2010-11 and a score from 2011-12. So they were in the district for those two time periods.
So we, but if, so if they came from another district, we wouldn't measure against their scores in that district?
That's right.
And so that group of students would then be added to our measurement pool the following year?
That's right.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. So relative to alt-comp and school improvement goals, did we meet our goals? And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Randy Smazel.
So this chart summarizes our progress over the last few years. You can see that our spring 11 scores for reading were 91%, and math, the 79%. You see what our goals were for 2011-12. We didn't meet those as district goals, but you also see the progress that we've made in 2011 and 12 and the increases in those areas. In 2012-13, we have a goal of 93.3% proficiency in reading and 81.8% in math. Chad has also worked extensively on looking at data from comparable districts, and so we also have that, not as a slide, but available for the board to review.
Can I ask a quick question on district goals? And I had that back when we were looking at them a minute ago. When we said district goals in reading and math, are we rolling up the goals that we're getting from each individual school because they all set their own goals of how much they're going to improve in reading and math? Or do we roll them down from a district level? Because at some point, the only way you're going to hit your district goal is if every individual school contributes the correct percentage to hitting that. So do we do any rolling up or rolling down, or is it all hoping everybody sets their own and we hope it works out?
So-- Thank you, Kathy. Good question. I have a role to play in setting those goals as well. So going back to No Child Left Behind, 100% of students proficient by 2014, that had been the rule that had governed us setting alt-comp goals until this year. And so this year, we took a look at trending, how much gain were we making kind of on an annual basis, again, at the district level, and then setting a realistic target from there. So we've been making a little less than, or sorry, right around a percent growth in reading, and in the 90s already, we set it for a 1% gain, up to 93.3. In math, we, you see, we made eight tenths of a percent gain last year. We felt like, just because that's a trend, and we've only got really one year of data, right, to say that because it was a new test. And so we said, that's a not enough of a gain, so we're going to bump that up to 2% as an expected gain. All right. So then for our sites who are performing above district averages, we asked them to make somewhere around 1 or a 2% gain from where they're at. In many cases, they're already pretty high in the either upper 80s or low 90s, and so making that gain will be a challenge for them. In sites that are performing below the district average, we actually set a goal that said, let's get you up close to where that, where we think the district average is going to be next year. So if everybody makes their goal, our district average realistically will actually boost up above these two numbers, and we'll have met our goals as a district as well.
Thank you. That helps.
So just to summarize tonight, you have the required components of these required reports by the state of Minnesota, and we have resolutions asking you to take action on and approve those reports later in the agenda. So in summary, you have the annual report for curriculum instruction and student achievement, the staff development report, the school improvement plans for this year for 2012-13, and the alt-comp goals for 2012-13 by specific site. And then our annual report will also be posted on the district website, and you had some questions during the presentation. Any other additional questions that you have at this time?
Questions, comments? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our consent agenda. Add a motion, please.
Moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to bring our consent agenda up to the floor. Rick, could you walk us through that, please?
Good. Again, these are items that are quite routine. We have a variety of personnel recommendations that we're moving forward with. Most of those hirings did occur in July and August, obviously, but we still have a few. Community ed services, also some personnel recommendations. Our expenditures payable for September 10th and the 24th. We have a transfer of funds, which is again a routine item through community education. And then we have the approval by the board of various district committees and councils and teams that are part of providing us advice, counsel, and insights to the district, again, by policy. Also added within that is a facilities advisory task force that we're going to be moving forward with for a year. A task force is a year-long commitment, and so with the board action tonight, Margot Bach and Kathy Selle will be working on forming a task force that would report directly to the Finance and Facility Committee of the Board to help the district in moving forward both on their maintenance and our enhancements to our facilities as we look over the next three, three years. And that would conclude the consent agenda items at this time.
Thank you. Kathy has a comment?
I do. In reviewing the student members on some of our task forces and committees, I noted that some of them were seniors who, from last year, who are already graduated, so probably aren't serving on those committees. So I would just make a note that those memberships should be checked, and to the extent we have students who are no longer in the district, that we replace them with students who are.
We will do that and come back with the revised.
I would add that note. I found one reference to faculty who also has retired that will just amend on the membership list.
Okay. Thank you. Any other items on the consent agenda? Comments? Discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with those slight modifications, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now to the action portion of tonight's meeting, the first item on the agenda is the proposed levy for the 2012 payable 2013. So it's the taxes for the 2013-2014 school year. Can I get a motion, please?
Moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Margot, you care to share?
Good evening. This is the proposed levy is the kickoff to the 13-14 budget year. So this is just the start, this is the proposed levy or preliminary levy. You as a board will approve the final levy in December. So Finance and Facilities has reviewed this information. We are recommending approval. I'm happy to report that it is a decrease this year of one, it's actually now 1.93%. We did have just a small adjustment at the state level since I handed out the board materials to you, but major changes in the levy are, includes the first year of our 10-year facility plan. It also includes our bond refunding that we approved last fall, and also some principal and interest on bonds, the final payment on them, and certainly any enrollment changes or prior year adjustments. We'll discuss the levy in more detail at the required reporting in December at the final levy with our truth and taxation presentation, but I would request your approval of maximum at this point, and then we would continue to review it between now and December, and I'll bring more details in terms of tax impact and that kind of data once I receive that from Hennepin County in November. That will be part of my December report. Any questions?
Thank you, Margot. Questions? Comments? So it's a 2% decrease effectively as it sits right now? Any other questions, comments?
No, this is just the way we usually do it, approving the maximum, because from here on out, we can go down, but we can't go back up. So this is the most fiscally prudent way to do it at this point in time, knowing that the 2% decrease would be the minimum that it would be because we can only reduce our levy, not increase it from here.
Thanks, Kathy. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the proposed tax levy for 2012 payable 2013, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the master agreement with the Minnesota School Employees Association, which are paraprofessionals for the 12-13 and 13-14 contract years. Can I add a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Gwen, could you walk us through this, please?
Yes, Shirley. Thank you very much. It was a great pleasure for our team to negotiate with Tony Harmon, who's the president.
Can you get a little closer to the mic, please?
Sure. It was a great pleasure for our team to negotiate with Tony Harmon.
Bad mic?
Okay. Try it one more time. It was a great-- Want to make sure everybody's awake. It was a great pleasure to negotiate, for our team to negotiate with Tony Harmon, who's the president of the paraprofessionals, along with Bob Shrank, who is with the state organization. And we came to agreement with the information that is before you. Their salary increase would be .5 for year one, which really started July 1st of 2012. And year two, they would have a .45 increase on salary. They will also have an increase, the district contribution will be an increase for health insurance for .25 both years, and they will have, there will be a longevity differential increase of 10 cents per hour for both years. And then the other thing is that the traffic guards stipend increased by 65 cents per hour for year one only. We have been encouraging members of this group to participate in the tax-deferred matching contribution program, and we're pleased that more people are interested in doing that. So we've increased it to .25, 2.5% increase from the district, and the total package is 5.35% over two years, which is what is in line with what you agreed to last year. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Gwen. Any questions or comments?
Were there any substantive language changes of note in the contract?
There were, really, it was about the financial more so than language. There really seemed to be quite pleased with the language that we have been working on over the last few years.
Thank you.
Gwen, just to clarify, the longevity differentials, those were just at years seven and 11?
Yes, those are, those two, years seven and 11, that was a change as part of the negotiations that we negotiated as, and was part of the total package.
If you want to clarify that in the motion, it just says the longevity differentials. If someone is reading this, they could assume it was every step, where it's just the two longevity steps, year seven and 11?
We will make that correction.
Any other discussion? Questions? Comments? All those in favor of approving the master agreement with the Minnesota School Employees Association, also known as our paraprofessionals, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have our annual report on curriculum instruction and student achievement, which, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Got two agreements here, didn't get the first one. Minnesota School Employees Association, which is--
Can you do it?
Got it right?
You're good.
You were wrong.
No, I was jumping, man.
So the next one is the report on instruction and student achievement. A motion?
So moved. Second.
Moving to second to approve the annual report on curriculum instruction and student achievement. Any discussion? We heard the report. We do have some garbled numbers--